Now returning from its recess back into regular session. First order of business before we proceed, we'd like for Mrs. Powell to swear in, Mr. Baker, please. This is number four of this patient.
Wherever Sean wants, it's in his eye. They want to take the picture. Hopefully she'll probably leave me out of it.
No, make sure she's in the center.
Can you see the board?
Yes.
We'll move.
So, Mr. Curry.
Move then.
Out here, get me all my pills.
What did you say?
I, Rodney Baker.
I, Rodney Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of West Virginia.
And will execute and perform.
And will execute and perform.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of Lincoln County.
Lincoln County.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baker, I would invite you to come up and have a seat. It's warm, too. It's a...
In the hot seat.
And always remember to check your seat before ever boarding.
He'll learn that the hard way.
They make good crap with them.
They accuse me, everybody, but it isn't me. Congratulations, Brandon.
Thank you.
We're glad to have Mr. Baker among us, and we now have the full board once again. We appreciate his interest in the school system and looking at his family here and knowing him, understand certainly why. And we feel with the boards that he will be an attribute to our Board of Education, provide some insight and some knowledge that we presently don't have, and we're always looking for that. So, congratulations, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed now, everybody's ready. Let's go to item three. Let me get me off of that. We're going to go to item three, which is the approval of the minutes of the January 7th, 2014 regular meeting. There's an attachment there. Could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll move.
Ms. Curry?
Say.
Mr. Wilkinson seconded that. Is everyone in favor of that?
Yes.
All yes votes. Okay. Minutes. Those are all attached over here. Your agenda. In future, you'll have time to review those minutes. You can see it is what we see here in the green or black. Public comments, do we have any, Mr. Middick? Anybody sign in?
I want to sign in.
Okay. Just for your information, persons who want to be on the board agenda have to notify Mrs. Powell by Wednesday of the preceding week because of the open meetings law and the five-day period there. So, and she puts the agenda out after consultation with Mr. Lucas and myself on Thursdays prior to the meeting. But now, if someone wants to come and speak to the board that isn't on the agenda, they have the right to do that, and they sign in prior to the meeting. So, that's why we do it that way. The only real difference about that is that when you sign in to speak to the board, we can't really converse with you. Now, we listen to whoever it may be, and oftentimes we may take notes, but we can't ask for clarification or questions or anything. I respond to questions they may have. All we can do is just listen to them unless they're on our agenda. We don't have anyone sign in tonight, so now we're going to go to somebody who is on the agenda. He's a re-attorney. He's been on there many times, and that's our project director, Dana Smith. Dana.
Yes, sir. I might have enough. Yes, I got it. This is a memo from the Department of Transportation concerning our walkway at Lincoln County High School. If you have a new member, I'll give you a little background walkway. This is a walkway that we got a grant years ago that would... It's on the side of the agriculture at Lincoln County High School. And this grant goes down that hillside towards the soccer field. And then included in one of those prices is steps. That's your first bid, the $308,000 will include steps. The State... The Department of Transportation is willing to further fund this project, the remaining amount, if we come up with our 20 percent match, which with the steps, that would be As far as my funds go, I've got $200,000 in capital improvement funds, and I'll have another $200,000 come July 1st if you want to take that money from that. Or you can take the cost without the stairs, or you can scrap the project and not do anything. It's whatever you guys want.
Let me just... For your... This... We put this out the bid once, and it was borrowed.
Yes. It was way over our budget, and the Department of Transportation has agreed to give us more money than what we were originally allocating to finish funding the project. But there's a matching... The Lincoln County Board of Education originally, and now would have to match the 20 percent of the project.
This is a project that Dan says many years ago. He's right, it was four or five years ago when we initially got the funds. It's not something where the Board of Education couldn't miss out the bid. We had to work through the Department of Transportation. Is that who it is now?
Actually, ZMM put out the bid.
I mean, as far as funds are coming from the Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation. Yeah.
Kind of been hindered a little bit there. Okay, does everyone understand what Dana's saying there? I guess...
For $9,000 more of county money, we could have the steps.
Yes, and I would recommend that you do the steps because what the company did, instead of bidding an alternative bid, they just gave us a price on what they would do to reduce the steps, which is probably not a real good deal. You know how companies do change orders, so... So, I would recommend either scrapping the project or including the steps in the project.
Do you have a timetable on for this or anything? Is there any urgency about it?
Yes. The bids were taken in December, and the bids were good for 60 days. So, February 4th, the bids will be past the deadline. So, the company would have to agree at that point in time to, I guess, extend his bid in order to take it after that date. So, February the 4th, the bids are no longer effective. If they want to honor the bid.
It's on here.
It's already honored yet. I'm just curious if there was a timetable.
I'll have to change the wording.
But I've just... The fact that it's on here, we could modify it a little bit. If it had not been on here, we'd have to place it on a future agenda. Okay, Dana. Thank you.
Clarification. Dana, when you're talking about this $43,600 match, you're saying that we can take that dollar amount out of the capital improvements funds that we have?
Yes. He's missing. He's missing. He's sat upon out of the game.
Well, he doesn't replace two.
Right.
That just works.
He's got a January the 21st agenda.
Well, that's really good. That's what you give.
Well, there was a paydown to item four. That's the same every week, right? The guy's trying to word what to do here.
Here's one that's over.
Okay. I don't know why I have to make that up.
We'll try to do better next time.
All right, Dana. I was looking, I said, well, that doesn't look right.
Look the same.
Okay. All right, Dana, anything else?
That's all I have for tonight. If you have something you want to discuss.
Okay. Board members, anything that you want to clarify on? Any projects that are ongoing that we need to update on or anything, Dana?
How are buildings been faring through this cold?
Fairly well. We've got a couple frozen water lines here and there, just a couple over Midway in Long Island. We don't know if they're busted yet or not, so let things thaw out a little bit and turn them. But we need to do some repairs. We've got the water turned off on Tuesday, so we're not going to have a high water getting there.
Doctor Ladd, anyway.
Can they still have classes?
Yes, they just have to temporarily go to main building for the restroom.
It's just...
Just temporary to be... Things thaw out and figure out whether we have some busted lines.
Is it little ones or the elder ones or...?
Some of them are small, smaller kids. One of them's...
Mix over there.
Mix over there.
Okay. No one has anything else for Dana? Thanks, Dana, for coming, and we'll, I guess, see you here maybe next month or so.
Okay.
We will act on your requests tonight, okay? Okay, now, let's go down to the administrative section. First thing we must do is have a motion and a second before we proceed. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Ms. Smith, you have a second? I'll say. Ms. Curry? Ms. Lucas?
Okay. Item A, out of county student transfer first for reminder of the 2013-14 school year. Item B, adoption of a resolution adopting measurable periods for determining full-time employee status under the Correble Care Act. Item C, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as best chaperones or provide transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided proof of private liability insurance and have completed volunteer orientation. Item D, to proceed with the efforts to construct a pedestrian walkway at Lincoln County High School utilizing a grant from the Division of Highways by removing the stairs as part of the project to reduce costs and seek additional funds from the DOH to complete the project. I think it will reward that. That one.
Okay.
Item E, to convey my deed property situated in Sharonville District at Branchland, West Virginia, site of the current Branchland Public Library to the Hamlin Lincoln County Public Library System. Property shall be sold by the library and proceeds will be applied toward the construction of a new facility. Item F was moved.
Okay. So, board members, are there any clarification changes or...
Are we going to change item D?
All right, let's look at item D. Proceed with efforts to construct pedestrian walkway at Lincoln County High School utilizing a grant from Division of Highways by removing the stairs as part of the project to reduce costs and seek additional funds from the DOH to complete the project. I think it will reward that. That one. Okay.
Item E, to convey my deed property situated in Sharonville District at Branchland, West Virginia, site of the current Branchland Public Library to the Hamlin Lincoln County Public Library System. Property shall be sold by the library and proceeds will be applied toward the construction of a new facility. Item F was moved.
Okay. So, board members, are there any clarification changes or...
Are we going to change item D?
All right, let's look at item D. Proceed with efforts to construct pedestrian walkway at Lincoln County High School utilizing a grant from Division of Highways by removing the stairs as part of the project to complete the project.
I just take off by removing the stairs as part of the project and then just... And seek additional funds from DOH. Just remove that one little...
By removing the stairs as a part of the project, we will delete that, right?
Uh huh.
So, it would be from Division of Highways to... We don't think it reduces costs anymore, right?
Right.
Are we still seeking funds from DOH to complete that? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we agree, but proceed with efforts to construct pedestrian walkway at Lincoln County High School utilizing a grant from Division of Highways and seek additional funds from DOH to complete the project. What's under that?
Proceeding with our first number 10.
Okay. And let's see. Division of Highways, seek additional funds from DOH to complete the project. Everybody okay with that language? Okay, that's... We should be starting with what we have now. All right. Now, Bertie, did you have something under item B that you wanted to tell us about?
Yes, on the resolution, on the second page, where it's bold, it says, "Now, therefore, it shall be resolved that the Board of Education will, in County, West Virginia, consistent with federal law, hereby adopt the following method of determining hours of service." And I changed the hours of service. That will now read, effective November 1, 2013, the board will use actual hours paid or entitled to be paid for the performance of duty method to determine if an employee satisfies the service hours requirement during the standard measurement period. And all I'm doing is changing the first document that I gave you. We were going to... If an employee come out and worked one hour, they're going to be credited with eight hours of service for that day. And we have a couple situations that would just automatically throw a person into being entitled to health insurance. So, we went back to the actual hour method.
I'm glad you did that because on my copy, I have that circled and starred.
Oh, okay.
I was going to ask.
Yes, yeah. And actually, most counties in the state are going, they're giving people eight hours per hour service. I think you're going to run into some issues, and it almost slipped me, and then...
And when I saw that, Bertie, I said, "No, that doesn't sound... You're on top of it, basically."
Yeah, so you're going to be actual hours worked or entitled to be paid, such as a bus driver, you know, they work three or four hours in October, eight.
That was one difference. Did I note the revision? Very good, okay. All right, the members of the board have any other questions about any of the administrative items? Item A.
Item A states you're selling the current branch of West Virginia library site, and the proceeds will be used for construction that you sell or acquire. Okay, is it only a sale of part of the property or all of the property?
We'll go back. At the old Branchland Grade School, on the far side of it is where Branchland Library has been for many years. Well, now, they don't really utilize that much because at one time it was the kids of Branchland all the way there, and it's utilized very little. The... Mrs. Smith from the library, Miss Daybin, had talked to us before. Their goal is to build a new facility beside Gage Valley Middle School, make up a location there. And you see, the board had given the library, the Hamlin Lincoln Library, the property for the Branchland Library many years ago, but there was a revision clause in there that should it ever cease to be used there, that you revert back to the board. So, that's what has transpired. So, now what the board, having gotten it back, is doing is giving it back to the Hamlin Lincoln Library Authority so that they can act. So, they're going to use the proceeds out of that, and they're going to sell that and then use the proceeds... Sell the old ones, use the proceeds for the construction of the new one. And I think as you look through there, you'll see some of these attachments, or some diagrams and things like this to show what their plans are. If that's a... If you're pleased. Okay, anything else from anyone? Ms. Lucas, you? Anything else on any of these? You covered it all?
No.
Okay.
It's probably the one that's not in the folder, isn't it?
It's okay, I can look at her. Take it.
And model three.
We'll find it. It just shows you some diagrams. Okay.
I think it's in the second package she gave you, right?
Oh, this one?
Yeah. You're going to see something's going to fall from another page, that picture.
There you go.
There you go. You got those pictures, you know, what my report is going to look like. And they're covered by the flames while they walk.
Basically says what I just told you, maybe.
They're looking all big and proud to some people so that you can say...
Usually you'll get an email to us on Thursdays, and on Friday you'll get a copy like this. Okay, no further questions. I'd ask for all the questions for administrative items A through E. The correction made on D, as we led the board, that we leave the steps portion of it, and we earlier took off that. So, all in favor of items A through E? See if I'd like to say yes, please?
Yes.
Yes. All yes votes. Okay, let's move to the finance section. In order to proceed, I need a motion and a second. Could I have a motion?
I'll move.
Ms. Wilkinson, can I have a second, please?
I'll say.
Ms. Smith? Bertie?
Okay. Item A, scheduled invoices totaling $869,514.2, and there's an attachment.
Let me just kind of... We'll see, all of these are all the bills that you're going to approve for payment tonight. That's in your packet. So, what Bertie typically does is when you get this, like on Thursday or Friday, if we have any questions or if you're concerned about a particular one, you can offer it to Cheryl's plan. If you want to come in and look at it, you can do that.
Item B, budget supplements totaling $15,239. Attachment on that also. Item C, budget transfers totaling $108,604.1 in total, and attachment also on those.
And you'll find there's a right there beyond what we just looked at. We aren't supposed to be right now, but you see here, the budget supplement.
He's working a real... He's working on the wrong side. Get the... I was going to say get the...
Get this one here. Is this the one?
That's the new one.
Put this one.
No, that's the good one.
That's the good one. It's got the one page.
I'm looking at last meeting's budget.
False. I don't think you've...
No, we didn't have a last meeting.
Look off mine.
We have it on there.
Okay.
Throw that away.
All the way or part of it?
But what he's asking us here is, in budget supplements, she's gotten some additional funding in, so now it has to be budgeted somewhere. So, she's asking us or showing us where she would like for that to be placed with seeking our approval. And then budget transfers, we may have money in one line, and we want to move it to another one. She's seeking permission to do that, too. So, once again, that's... We're paying bills and then moving some money around we already have or gotten. And she has time to, you know, put this at home, it'll begin to make sense. Okay, does anybody have any questions about any particular item that's on there or anything, or any concerns about any items, other than the total cost of them? Okay, if not, then I'll ask for a vote on that, please?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Y'all in favor? Okay, all yes votes on the finance items. You'll be an expert in those things.
Make your choice.
Give his other blue one. Not that blue one, that's correct. Got to change here.
You're going to some places?
It won't always be this way.
I don't know. I'll get it straight up.
You're going to make me nervous. Okay. Now, going to the personnel section, which is blue.
I'm there.
Hey, I knew he could catch on.
He's on the other blue.
No, I'm on the right blue one this time.
I know, it's good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're on the personnel section, the blue paper, and I need a motion.
I'll move.
Ms. Curry, you second?
Second.
Ms. Wilkinson? Second. We'll go back to Christian here.
Okay. Section A is the employment of a substitute, either short or a long-term professional personnel. Section B is the employment of extracurricular personnel. Section C is a leave of absence, and it notes the term underneath the effective date. Section D is resignation and/or retirement, and it's noted under the effective date, whether it's a resignation or retirement. And asking for the correct correction to the minutes of January 7th, 2014, it should have read Rhonda Premaine Secretary III, Accountant II at LCHS.
Okay. Any questions or concerns about the personnel schedule? Are you sure about this one about Gerald Harper retiring? Are you sure?
So he says.
Can you get that from that?
Try.
Okay. All in favor of the personnel items, signify by...
Yes, please.
Yes.
All yes votes. All right, so we've gone through all the items on the agenda. We're down to the comments and concerns section, where Emerson Board and Superintendent oftentimes ask questions of something that they have interest, they'll share with us. So, let's start with Ms. Lucas. Do you have anything?
I do. We may want to wait until the end, because I think you're sharing some things he wants to share.
All right. Let me do the board members first, Jeff, before we come back, okay? Anybody, members of the board, have anything?
I have something. Not sure I fully understand it myself, but I have a request from some folks in the Midway area. It's regarding our extracurricular buses and a desire to have a regular stop in the Midway area, preferably near Midway Elementary School, designated for extracurricular buses. And also the concern, this one parent said they face several situations where the extracurricular bus, say, coming back from an event in the Canola area or some other far reaches, you know, for walking. They would have to meet the bus and pick up their children at the high school rather than having to stop there. Now, I know this doesn't make a lot of sense to you, and it makes a lot of sense to me that probably it is that.
And that call too. And but I contacted one of the people, and they said they stopped at Duval School, and the parents could pick them up there.
I wonder why they couldn't stop at Midway.
Well, I don't know why. Of course, they may not have been coming to Midway on my...
Sure, 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 sure.
But I agree, they need... And I think it may... It should be noted that a parent can take their kid home from an athletic event.
That's correct. It's just like taking a child out to school.
They do not have to ride the bus back.
That's right.
That's true.
But you have to give the person in charge a note saying you're taking your child home.
But we really listen to the parent, not just to a friend or a neighbor or someone.
Right, right. Yeah.
So, was this... Ms. Wilkinson, was this a return from an athletic activity?
Athletic. Is that what it looks in this case? Yes. I couldn't fully understand why there was a need for a designating area for the bus to pull in and park. Our conversation got interrupted, or else we couldn't have pursued that far.
So, right now, if you understand, they go... Their only option was to come back to the high school?
That had happened on more than one occasion, as I understand. The bus wouldn't stop for some reason or other in the Midway area, and they had to go all the way to the LCHS to retrieve their children. Which doesn't make any sense.
Brad, he's off the same thing as the Duval, so they weren't stopping there.
Yeah. But I was told they did stop at Duval.
Okay.
And the parents picked them up there. I can see that you need this stop. Place it in place two, and we'll stop there. I'm sure the parents want to come to Hamlin again.
I have this question, and I'm sure you all have an answer. Is there a policy that... Let me back up. A moment ago, and I know that some of my kids being in athletics, if you take your child from an athletic event, you sign them out. That shows that you, as a parent, are taking responsibility for them. Is there a similar procedure in place for every stop that bus is going to make? I mean, I can see from a liability perspective, if you take the kids from Lincoln County High School to the event and bring them back to Lincoln County High School, and the parents pick them up from there, that being a different liability scenario than having multiple stops, how... What do you have in place to make sure that the right kids get off at the right place? Just something to think about. I agree, it makes absolutely no sense to make a parent drive from Midway to here, but there needs to be a procedure in place prior to the kid getting on the bus initially so that you know which kid's going to get off where in advance. Otherwise, there will be a problem with the wrong kid getting off in the wrong place and then the system being in trouble.
The part where they can't let a kid off unless someone does pick them up. I mean, they can't let them off in the middle of the night, if they, that that, I mean, they just can't do that.
Maybe Jeff, but I think what Brad's saying is, the only persons that we would permit to take that child would be their parents. And they can't say, no, I'm gonna let my neighbor take them or anything. The, the parent would have to be there to accept their child at that location.
Each parent and each child?
Yes.
Jeff, you're probably saying how, how's the driver going to know, but that's, I understand what you're saying. Hopefully a coach or teacher, someone on the bus recognizes the child's parents.
That's good, but, and I tell you, we want to make sure, last time I went, I had to drive from Allen Creek to Hamilton, and they did right by it. Okay. What's next? Is that all you get on that?
That's all I have, Brad, do you have anything? No.
Carol.
Of course I have time. You just missed it, you know, thirty minutes on.
You ought to have a lot saved. Okay, Trish, I'll let you go.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm going to, to.
You're gonna prefer. Well, I just have one thing to say, and I might as well say something else. And my comments related, relate to the water issue, the contaminated water issue, which everybody knows throughout probably most of the United States. But anyway, here at Lincoln County High School in Hamilton, PKA, are the only schools that we have that are now affected by the contaminated water. And me personally, and this is my personal view, and everybody has a right to their own, I guess I'm the only person here that also is living in that circumstance. Mr. Curry's fortunate enough to have a well, but, you know, I won't drink that water. And, you know, we only use it as a minimal thing when we have to, you know, certain things we do with. I do shower in it now, but, and it took me a couple of weeks to do that, but I would not drink, I will not drink that water, that's my way I feel about it. And I think it'd be hypocritical on my part then to say at the elementary school and at the high school that we're gonna have our kids to use that water. So me personally, I'm of the opinion, for the foreseeable future, until we found out, we'll find out more, and Ms. Luks and I have talked about this, that we not use the, find a better word, city water at those, at those, at those schools. That we, what, what are we used for cooking, we have sanitizer for hand washing, that our meals are, that don't, we use meals that don't require utilizing that water. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I just know that, I think to myself, here I am, and I, you know, we've got bottled water everywhere now, I go get, in Campbell County, get my jug filled up. But then, you know, I think I'd be a hypocrite to say, for these kids, it's okay for them to, for us to prepare their meals or have them to drink. And that's just my two cents on that, and I talk to Brad.
I agree with you a hundred percent, that it's not, that my sister lives here, and the water still smells turd. I know she doesn't drink it, and I certainly won't drink it, because I personally don't drink city water anyway, so I'm, I'm good for you. But this is really not good for you. But, and I know my grandkids, I bought them bottled water, takes to them, so I don't want them to drink it.
And there, and there may be, and I mean, it looks like, there may be some additional costs in, in food preparation, I don't know. But to me, I think if there is, it is something we need to do.
Well, at this time, we've made preparations, as you all know, I know you don't, to provide bottled water for the schools for a period of time. Every day that we don't have school extends that, you know, that we're providing water. Also, as Mr. Fisher and I talked, the, the menus have been changed at those schools in order to provide them with food that does not require having, having to use the water to cook. And if there is a need to prepare food to cook, we have the bottled water to use. Or if we're having to clean and wash the pots and pans and all the utensils, that's being used by the bottled water, not the city water. So, until we feel, you know, that it's, we have sent out a message, I think, from both schools to the parents. It was going to be until this Friday, but, you know, I'm sure that we could extend that if necessary. We did get the go-ahead from the health department, you know, before we let the students back into the schools. We do have a written statement that they did clear everything for the, for us to, to utilize everything.
Did they, did they take a sample of the water, or just, are they taking samples, Dana?
The only, only thing that the health department has done is check the chlorine in the water. They've not taken samples to look at chemical composition in water, no.
Well, there, there's so many unknowns here. Today's news came out and said they dumped twenty-five hundred more gallons than they did last week. I mean, and then last week it was two chemicals that were released rather than one. When our children's safety and health is at issue here, I'd say I think we need to err on the side of caution. And once again, I, you know, I won't drink that water, I don't know when it will, maybe like Brad, swear off of it.
The National Guard did provide, and they're the ones that did provide us with a lot of water, and we do have some, a large quantity here to be able to provide.
Trish, are we using trays for the leaves?
Yeah, we are using sarafon. Yeah, we're using, not using the regular.
I was wondering how, where can you clean all those trays?
Yeah.
Or you can't hear your dish, or whatever.
Would it be worth considering to hire someone to independently test the water for chlorine content? I mean, at, at some point, it's going to be much more cost-effective to do that, than to continue providing bottled water once you have to start paying for it. And, and as an even better reason, you want peace of mind that when we send the kids back into those schools, the water is safe. And I, from what Dana described, the health department's testing, a high level of chlorine is probably not enough to render water that had at least two chemicals they disclosed in large quantities. So I, I don't know what it would cost to independently test it, but I would certainly feel better with my oldest child going to Lincoln County High School, knowing the water had been independently tested and was safe.
I don't think it's that expensive, do you Dana? I don't think it costs a lot to do that.
Well, maybe Dana can.
Well, Dana, when they're, place up their South Service, or something, that did some independent testing for Chamblyte or something?
Yeah, they, they've had some independent people in here testing the water, but I, you know, I've never seen anything online or on the network where they've taken these samples. They were supposed to have taken them from a lot of the fire items in different areas. I've never seen any results with any samples in this county.
Where you get online and look at their samples, it doesn't, you can't find them.
Right. Well, you know, I, I've seen online where there is somebody who's doing such testing, and they'll, I don't know what it costs, but I mean, they'll come and do tests.
I could find out what it costs, like you know.
The only thing that troubles me about that, and I certainly understand what you're saying, Al, is that nobody really knows, from what I can read, what is acceptable, when, you know, they'll say, well, we're, one time you read it, it's point one, whatever it is per B, and it's okay, or as long as it's below that. And then somebody else comes out from some other agency and says, no, unless it's point zero 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 five seven, it's not even, and so I just feel uncomfortable. Told someone, even though you haven't tested, what, what is the standard that's really safe, you know? But I, I know what you're saying, at some point, I would agree, we need to test it.
Well, you need to have a line tested, as independent toxicologists that can answer those questions.
Right, and I'm not sure the government even knows that yet.
And that may be the problem, one plus, who knows what additional chemicals may be revealed down the road. Ten days, they're revealed, or at least the second chemical. You have, I mean, you have to know what to look for when you test, that line of tests is useless.
Well, they, today, I think I saw it on the news, or something, where the US Attorney's Office is actively involved at Freedens, that, that, that they've begun a more involved investigation. But, you know, once, and once we know what's acceptable and is safe, then we test, we know we meet that, then I feel better about it. But Dana, in the meantime, you could find out about the testing procedure, or where we could get that done.
I'll do it.
I agree, we don't want to waste money, but I just don't feel comfortable until I know what the proper standard is.
You know, you'd think the state of West Virginia would have labs to do this sort of testing.
Or you'd think Marshall or Washington State University didn't have a lab that they could check.
Well, what I understand, because of this chemical, this particular chemical, they did not have the testing in place. And they had to come up with and, and have a special instruments or whatever in order to test, in order to determine. And then they had to decide what level was safe, what level was not. None of that was already in place, and they, they started from, you know, ground up, building the procedure and, and building the standards, or coming up from, you know.
Well, that's what I mean, and this company that, that makes this main chemical, you know, they don't want to tell what ingredients are in place, it's proprietary interest or something, you know, that we're giving away a state secret, we tell you what's in it. There are too many ifs in here for this thing, but anyway, that won't last long. I was gonna say, the US Attorney can be able to.
I did read somewhere yesterday, the National Guard, I guess, you know, they're now on the fringes for the first time testing the water, you know, I don't know.
Maybe they'll fit the handle on one of these days.
How many days has passed now, you know, since we were given the all-clear?
I want to check what the other superintendent's gonna be affected from, he's in secret there, doing all the, I can't see him.
I saw that one of the legislators had an article, they, where she, like, you know, living in Charleston, stayed in one of the hotels there, and after the all-clear was given here a week or so ago, she took a shower, and then she got this massive eye infection, and had to go to specialists, and her sights are danger and everything else. I take showers with my eyes closed.
And I know this to be a fact, my grandson went to, he was over at Sam's the other evening after the all-clear had been given. He washed his hands in the restroom, his hands are all broke out.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's an important issue, but I just don't believe it. Okay, you want Mr. Huffman, or Mr. Meekid, Meekid to talk?
Oh, God.
I think you're having a convention.
I've been. I may want to hear a Mr. Huffman too, there may be one out there. Jeff, would you talk?
All this talk of the water crisis, I thought we'd talk about the calendar.
Anything changes.
Congratulations. Yeah, I'll get you one too, Sean. As you know, we've, we've missed several days at school this year, fourteen since December the tenth, thirteen of those days since January the third.
How many, how many were there?
A total of fourteen thus far for the school. You probably know all that if you go on Facebook. You may know a little, little something about people's opinions.
I know their opinion.
Four of those days was due to this water situation, as a matter of fact, four, four days, one of which we're actually gonna make up on February the seventeenth. You'll see now that it's IS day.
And that's gonna be devoted.
Alright, that was as a result of one of the phone conferences that Mrs. Luks and I participated in with the state, state board, the governor's office, the homeland security. There were lots of those phone conferences that took place there over those days. And we were encouraged to use that day, we, we brought our teachers back. Looking for the date here. Was it the fourteenth?
That was the highest.
Yeah, yeah, January the fourteenth, we ended up using that.
No, that's your right, Trish, what did you?
Fifteenth, as an IS, yeah, there it is, January the fifteenth is the IS day. But what I wanted to know is that of those fourteen days that we've missed this year, there's actually ten days within the calendar that we can make up from this construction. So I just wanted to share with you what those dates are. All of the OS days, what would you call it, is that purple? March the third, March the fourteenth, March the twenty-eighth, April the eleventh, May the second, May the twelfth. All of those days will now become instructional days. Six of those days, six OS days. As well as the day there in blue, it says CD, March the thirty-first, that day now becomes an instructional day. The two remaining IS days, the one on April twenty-first, as well as the one on June the fourth. Those are in yellow. Those two days will now become instructional days. But in order for faculties to meet, what we will do is have an early release on those two days. So students will be released two hours early, so that faculties may hold their meetings as required by state code.
Now typically, these, there aren't any students, they are on IS days?
That's right, they're scheduled.
Then, what you're saying, they'd be a regular instructional day, that they'd be really early to do their IS business.
We've already missed four days, you know, that we're not gonna be able to make those up. We won't be able to make up days over spring break, spring break's protected, so are those days after June the fifth. So, any days that we miss from here on out are not gonna be days in which we're gonna be able to make up for missed instruction. So we've maxed out on the number of opportunities that we have to make up for missed days.
So you're saying we're not gonna achieve a hundred and eighty days?
We're not.
Right now, we have a hundred and seventy-six, isn't it?
Right.
That's the best we can, how many of those days are the emergency day of the?
Well, there was three of those days, where we were out. We were allowed to use that, that February seventeenth Faculty Senate Day that was scheduled in February, we moved that to January the fifteenth. As you may recall, we brought our, our staff in. So that IS day counts as an instructional day, whether students are in attendance or not.
But there, we're at a hundred and seventy-six days, I just, can the governor not give us, or the state superintendent allow us to count those days, or not hold it against us?
All that, all of the necessary personnel, they should participate in that maybe.
And, what was it, say, last Friday, met with the state superintendent, the superintendents of the affected counties. And he has stated, and I think he's been stated on CD as well. He is going to wait until after the winter season to make a determination as to whether he's going to forgive those days and say, you do not have to make these up. We suspect now that all of the days that we've had to miss due to temperature or snow, that's what he will do. But he wanted to wait to see how many days actually, but he does have the capacity to do that.
And how many days do we talk about with him?
For us, and more for, I guess, you know, him.
Now, if that happens, if we come from seventy-six, we have a hundred and seventy-nine.
A hundred and seventy-nine, but still, we're not gonna make those days up, there's nowhere on the calendar to make them up.
Well, that's fine.
So, whether he forgives them or not, you know, we've maxed out our opportunities to make up for missed instruction regardless of what he may do with those days.
Is there any penalty for us meeting a hundred and eighty days?
There's not, not this year. Now, if we fast forward, you know, a year from now, you know, the guidelines, the code, the laws change, and we would be required to make up every day that we've missed, which would include spring break and up through June the thirtieth. So the calendar for next year will look very similar to what you see, it'll be of a traditional nature, but you're gonna see every possible out-of calendary day listed within the calendar, so that everyone knows that those are potential or possible days that we can make up for missed instruction.
Like these days in orange here, that's our spring break, right?
Right.
And that, and they aren't part of the two-hundred-day calendar for employees?
That's right.
Out of calendar.
Right.
What you're saying, we can probably expect next year, that, and days like that, we have to go in there and have school?
It's a possibility.
How do they, is it gonna require legislation, how you affect, you know, I, our teachers and all of our personnel, they have worked two-hundred days, and they're saying, okay, here's your calendar from school starts. And, but what if happens, like what's happened this year, and we miss all these various days? We say, well, you didn't work this day, this day, and this day, but we're gonna have you to work these non-calender days.
Well, currently, we, we have forty-three weeks to get those two-hundred days in. Well, currently, we have forty-three weeks to get those two-hundred days, and the beginning of next year, we'll have forty-eight weeks.
Well, what I'm asking, Jeff, is, do we know, is it permissible to alter, I don't know whether we're altering a person's contract or not, we're changing their days of employment, is that, are we permitted to do that now? Or is that going to require legislation to allow us to do that? Do we know that?
I don't know, but we have answered that question, you've heard.
Well, they did. The legislators said, we're giving you five more weeks, you don't have forty-three weeks, now you have forty-eight weeks. And what you guys will see soon, because you have to have public meetings, board meetings on the calendar, you will see a traditional calendar, a calendar where students are to come to school, and you will have an employment calendar, which will have more days in it. And if we can't bring employees in these three days, they will have to make them up at the end, wherever we have those days in that employment calendar. This is a new way of thinking, because we have been under the rule of you can't go past June eighth for a long time. But now they're allowing us to put some extra days for situations like this, or if people want to have a balanced calendar, which is a year-round calendar kind of. But it's a new way of thinking, instructional calendar and an employment calendar. So the teachers are going to know, the employees are going to know, I'm employed from here to here. So we have instructions, we don't have to use any days if we get out here, but there is a possibility I don't get out to here.
And that is already passed?
Yes, yes. We have the guidelines, Mr. McKibb and I went to a training, but we have the guidelines for this to occur. And this is a whole new way of thinking, and we have to change it. And it's going to be hard, but we have to have, you all will have to have two public meetings between now and when we have to present the calendar to the state to be approved. There's lots of, you know, questions, because this is new, this is a new way of thinking, and it's going to be hard. It's hard enough for us to understand, because I know Mr. McKibb has studied it more than I have, because he's in charge of that calendar and the calendar committee. But just listening to a lot of the questions when we went to the meeting, trying to grasp, you know, and understand what these new rules are for us, you know, it's going to take some time. And then when we hear, and I want to bring this, when we hear on the news about Canaan County and Putnam County extending their calendar this year because of the weather, I mean, the water, the difference is, you've seen these purple OS days within Lincoln County's calendar, they're spread out prior to our last day for students, where Boone County and Canaan County and Putnam County all had their OS days at the end. So that's where they have stated they're extending their calendar. They really, the students are having to come after what they thought was the last day for them. They are extending it until, you know, so that they can make up their OS days. The only day that we're extending it is one day, but that's the IS day on June the fourth. So we really have extended it to students one day, but.
I'm sure this is a gross simplification, since the first I heard of this was when we started talking about it a moment ago. But next year is how it will work that if you have a day canceled due to a water emergency, or you have a day canceled due to a snow or weather emergency, that is a day that doesn't count for the two-hundred days of employment that employees have for a year. How do you, how do you get around that two-hundred-day maximum? When you lay out two-hundred days initially, then you have cancellations, how do you, how do you get around that?
It's complicated.
I think they're really just trading them off.
We are initially, because you've got seven days built into the calendar, you've got those six OS days outside school environment days, as well as a curriculum development day that we automatically are required to include within our calendar to make up for missed days of instruction. So we do measure.
Two-hundred days, right this year?
So we trade those days, and for next year, too.
They also, they also.
Those days will still be there for next year. It's, it's going to be when we have gone over seven days next year that we're going to have to look at how we're going to make those days up, because we're still going to have seven in the hallway.
And I guess that's my question, is what happens when you get day eight, but through day seven, you've already used your two-hundred days of employment eligibility? How do you, how do you get more days out of the employees? I mean, now, and maybe that's a question for way down the road.
Well, you don't, unless you, at this point, unless you were paying for additional days. That's why what Jeff has come and said, we're, we can't meet that one hundred and eighty day.
Right.
You know, you've got one option, everybody just stays home, knowing that you're going to have to make it up on one of these out-of-calender days. That was not a day of employment, actual employment for anyone, so.
So next year, you could work that same way towards the June twenty-eighth day?
Right.
Rather than having a day where the kids stay home, and the teachers and other people report, everyone stays home and, okay.
That's how it would work.
That's what I thought, I just didn't know I asked the right question.
Total system shutdown, when you hear that, that's no one, shows up as they're said. Usually, Brenda Jeff.
But regardless, the teachers, they'll all get paid like they've always been done. They'll get paid every two weeks regardless of what the situation is, so, you know.
And they'll still be working only those two-hundred days?
Right, but they can go beyond June eighth.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, does that start next year, next year?
Yes.
Not this year, right? So it's been a law, I think it's what, forty-three weeks or something, that the employment term of employees can only be forty-three weeks. Legislature altered that, so we're, we used to have to finish by June the eighth. We couldn't go beyond that, now, starting next year, we, so we work on our calendar for next year. These are all things we're going to have to look at very closely, because we have more flexibility, and, you know, the legislature have given it to us to ensure that we can meet the one hundred and eighty days.
They're all, and you'll see, they're all types of things that are in those directions, such as accrued time, the schools actually go longer during the day than they're required to. That's accrued time. I mean, there's, get into that.
It must be twenty years since we've had a week like this. Now, let's hopefully, it's another twenty years, and someone else is sitting around here, you know, another time lady. Yeah, it's been a tough one. Any other questions about the calendar, what we're doing to make up days?
Thanks, Mr. McKibb. Okay, anybody have, you've done all the, Jeff?
I think it was.
Do you have anything, please?
I do. I, I want us to establish a day for a work session, for finance, as well as looking at the budget cuts and the things that we're going to have to plan for as far as personnel, prior to any decisions that we make. We just want to make sure that you all understand what's before us.
Do you have any time, length of, how long do you envision this happening? Is this like four hours all day, or is it?
How long do you think that would take you over? Maybe we should probably plan for a couple hours? And at least another hour for, to talk about specific tests that we will have to make.
Three or four hours? I mean, I, I'm not, we're not down, but I'm just trying to think. We always kind of joke here, we're all retired, so we can come about any time, unless we have doctor's appointment.
February eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
And we don't need the personnel hearings.
Yes.
So.
Possible, we could use that.
And are we saying, what time would we start on February the eighteenth?
We might have to make that up to make those.
Schedule.
Well, that's why we're, you know, we're pretty.
Doesn't have to be that day. No, since that one was already scheduled.
So we'll have, we'd meet on the first and third Tuesdays, so that would be, I guess, we'll be ready.
We have to.
Yeah, we can do it.
All right, tell us what dates to avoid.
Is that a whole week, a lot of good week?
Probably end of the week would be fine, most likely. I'd yet to have a trial until early.
Oh, I see.
I need to be there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
I can be there, we're going to go for that training on that weekend also.
Right, we can just come.
We have a meeting on the twenty-fourth, right? Could we do it on the twenty-fourth? We've only had one this month, or maybe.
Are you, are you, oh, I'm still on February twenty.
No, I'm tomorrow.
This is already January twenty-fifth.
Well, I'm trying to see what days, that's not the, first or third, that's wrong.
Well, we, we had one on the third, but we had that scheduled as a meeting for personnel hearings, but we don't have to have, we don't have to have that as set aside for personnel.
Tell us what day it is through.
Probably the last week in February is the one we, we've already, we have one there.
So do I have to go over your personnel files?
That's what I was asking, do you think? We have to have.
We need to.
It's too close. It's too close. Is there a day in the week of the tenth?
February?
Yes.
February, the week of the tenth.
Does that count, the Tuesday any time that week?
Uh, personal spending, we have personal spending every time.
Not the latter, that's.
I'm tied up on my list.
That's a bad week for me, but if it needs to be, you know, I can.
What, February tenth? Is that a Monday?
It is a Monday.
Would you do it fifth, sixth, or seventh? Oh, tenth, did y'all say tenth is good?
Well, I guess it's good for me.
Fifth, sixth, or seventh would be better for me, I fly out on the seventh.
Here, if you go.
I'm just going to come back with that one next week.
Fifth, sixth, or seventh, February. Is that good for you, Carol?
But you have fifth, sixth, or seventh in February. But I don't have anything for Peter. I mean, the only thing I could actually do is just go over where we're at now. It's safe, not really. You know, if you guys can come anything, so.
Go back to the tenth.
Back to that week again?
Yeah.
Carol's going.
Just, we'll just leave it the tenth, and I'll try to, I'm just flying down to drive back with him. Because his pool on that's hardly making.
Tenth, five.
Twelve.
Twelfth, closer.
Carol will be back for the twelfth, is it, would you?
I'll try to change my.
Well, I mean, would it make a difference if it was the twelfth rather than the tenth? Okay, February the tenth, does that seem agreeable to everybody? February the tenth, okay.
What time?
Are you able to get three?
Afternoons, I mean, either afternoon or morning.
Well, I'm thinking, she's saying probably three or four hours, maybe, or is that? What time do you, you all, like, the vote district, we're out?
Well, good.
Yeah, I can make it work.
All right, so are we saying twelve?
I'll change my.
No, I keep looking to get your approval, and that's a good time for you. Okay, noon on February the tenth? Everybody think it's okay? Then this panel will send out notifications, leave it.
That was it.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else to mention before? Mr. Assistant Superintendent?
No, sir. I might be able to do it that way.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, if there's nothing further, then we're going to adjourn this meeting until February the fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at the county office here in Hamlin, and a motion to adjourn. Mr. Baker?
Ms. Second.
Ms. Smith, second, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Oh, yes.